All right, um, good evening, folks. Welcome to the City of Lowell zoning board appeals public hearing for February 10th, 2025. Just a few reminders, if you have an electronic device, if you could turn it off or put on silent, that'd be great, so it doesn't disrupt the meeting. You can also join the meeting virtually through Zoom and by calling in as well. Um, the first item on the agenda, we have continued business, ZBA-2024-49 petition of variance. The applicant is Alexa Furman, property located at 451 Broadway Street. Um, the Lowell zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing until interested persons relative to an application by Alexa Furman to open an event space at 451 Broadway Street. The property is located in the UMU zoning district and requires special permit under Article 12.3G for their proposed use, a variance under Section 6.1.4.3G for relief from off-street parking requirements and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Is anyone here for Broadway Street? And no one's on Zoom, is that correct? No, no, no one's on Zoom. Okay, we're gonna table that one, we're gonna go right into new business. ZBA-2025-2, the petition is a special permit. The applicant is Atlantic Use Trucks and Salvage Corporation, property located at 9 Baldwin Street. Um, the Lowell zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing until interested persons relative to an application by Atlantic Use Truck and Salvage Corp. for special permit pool to convert an existing non-conforming use of the property from automobile salvage company to a metal fabrication company. The property is located in the suburban mixed-use SMU zoning district and requires special permit under Section 4.5.2 to convert from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use and for any other relief required in the zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Attorney Catherine Flood here on behalf of Atlantic Use Trucks and Salvage Corp. regarding property located at 9 Baldwin Street. We are here tonight for a special permit pursuant to 4.5.2 to convert an existing non-conforming use of the property from an automobile salvage company to a metal fabrication company. Here with me tonight is the president of the corporation, Mark Corey. The property is located in the suburban mixed-use district, and the property has been owned by the Corey family in different entities and used as an automobile salvage company for over 50 years. The property currently stores and recycles junk cars and auto parts. The parcel consists of approximately 44,547 square feet of land with a one-level steel building containing four garage bays consisting of approximately 5,039 square feet. The change in use is from a salvage company to a metal fabrication company. The metal fabrication company will be operated by Emerald Ironworks, Inc., which is currently located in Tuxbury and has been in business since 2008. The metal fabrication process consists of receipt of metal products, cutting, welding, and assembly. The company manufactures metal steels and railings. Pursuant to Section 4.5.2, the board may award a special permit to change in non-conforming use if it determines that the change in use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. The proposed non-conforming use is less detrimental than the current non-conforming use based on the fact that all fabrication work is done inside of the building. The proposed use will require the cleanup and the removal of all of the junk cars and auto parts from the lot. The proposed use is an improvement to the property. The proposed use reduces traffic to the property. They will no longer be using tow trucks to bring cars to the property. The issuance of the special permit will bring another successful business to the city of Lowell. Emerald Ironworks currently employs 14 onsite employees and eight offsite employees. The relocation of the company to Lowell will allow them to expand and hire additional employees. Therefore, we would ask the board to issue the special permit. We have some photographs of the current situation and use of the building as well as the way Emerald Ironworks operates in Tuxbury, if I may.
Oh, yeah, of course, of course, Counselor.
We also have, um, a signed, um, letter in support by the five abutting neighbors. They all support this petition, and we have another letter of support from Fred Faust. We received comments from the various boards, and we were able to address them all prior to the hearing today. We did submit a utility plan. It does show that the property is only serviced by water and electricity. There is no sewer. It's septic.
Okay, thank, thank you, Counselor. Um, if that's all you have, we're gonna open the hearing to the public. Um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition, in opposition, in opposition. All right, seeing that portion of public hearings closed, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? In favor, in favor. Seeing that the public hearings closed, we're gonna open question the comments from the board. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Procop, Mr. Procop, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you, Attorney Flood. This was well represented. Um, I just have one question. Um, the response to the comments that you submitted, um, over the weekend regarding comment two, um, just to just for my clarification, I think the department's comment was to provide a plan for removal to the, the existing auto salvages. Um, so I see that your response here that the plan is to remove it on or before April 1st.
Correct.
Right? But how, for my identification, how do you plan to relocate those?
So, the petitioner owns the abutting property to the right.
Yes.
Um, so the plan is to relocate what is on this site over to that property.
Okay.
This is, um, a way for him to start downsizing, um, his company. So,
Okay.
Putting the metal fabrication at 9 Baldwin, he will then move what's existing over to the other property to the right of it, if you're facing.
If you're facing, okay, got it, got it.
Where he operates the same business.
Gotcha. All right. So when I was looking at, at, um, at the properties, that's what I was trying to figure out. How is it, um, how are you gonna logistically move it? But you're just moving it from one end to the next, basically?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
Um, he also said a lot of it will be disposed of. It'll be a lot less.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. All right, I don't have any more questions.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Procop. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe the concerns expressed by the planning and project management team have been adequately addressed, resulting in a, a new proposed use which is far less detrimental than the existing. I'll be voting in favor, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, three, I just have a couple of questions, but I think this is, um, a, a fitting petition for us to approve tonight as a special permit. Um, but, um, I just want to understand the business itself. Um, so you're coming from Tuxbury and you're relocating to Lowell. Um, it, it looks like it's a small business, and it looks like a very large location. Do you expect a lot of expansion on this site? Is that why the applicant is looking for this site? Or why, why is the site drawn, why is the applicant drawn to this site?
Hi. Um, the new tenant, his lease is up in Tuxbury. There's a, there's a development going on, on the property he's at, some industrial property. So, and what was your question?
I mean, I, So they're, they have to vacate because they can't renew their lease at their,
Yeah, they had a seven-year lease that expired, and it actually expired January 1st, and they made a, you know, month-by-month contract with the owner. You know, it's a good relationship. It's just development plans going on in Tuxbury.
Okay.
It's, his, his building is the same size he's in now with a smaller lot outside, you know. Um, yeah, it's pretty simple.
It's a very large lot you have there for this operation.
Yeah, well, yeah, if he's got 20 employees, he might have to park 20 cars, or maybe, you know, he's got a couple of trucks. They do installations at the airport and shopping malls. You know, it's all pre-manufactured, you know, custom staircases, you know, like the, you know, they design them, fabricate them, and install them.
Well, I'm glad they've chosen to come to Lowell. I'm glad they're going to be making a better use of this lot. Um, my, in my head, I'm thinking, um, does the lot entertain another use because it's bigger than maybe this use requires? No?
No.
Okay.
No, sir.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. No further questions.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Uh, the chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yep, this makes sense. Uh, I mean, it is a use that is gonna be less detrimental of what's there already. Um, and one thing I did notice as far as the comments are concerned, Counsel, is, uh, the planning and project management team made comments that they're making some recommendations. Um, let me just point it out that they say, I would like to see if maybe we can adopt these as conditions, if that's possible, if your client's in agreement, but it says, uh, their recommendation of the applicant to provide an updated site plan clarifying the layout of the proposed use of the site. Um, due to the change in use, clarity is needed on site operations and potential impacts to nearby Merrimack River and surrounding neighborhood. Two, the applicant to provide a plan for removal of the existing auto salvage to the board with a clear timeline for cleanup and removal. If you can just give us a timeline when you can move everything.
Um, I addressed those.
Is in the, is in your comments?
Yes, I addressed all three comments.
Oh, you did? Okay. I, I was kind of scanning through it real quick. We got it, like, late this afternoon, so.
No, it's okay. Yeah, I sent it, I sent it this morning.
Okay.
We addressed all the,
So your client would be in agreement with those comments, like the, with, uh, with, we can put those as conditions as far as what the planning and project management team?
Um, so,
They just want, they just want an outline, you know, pretty much of when you're gonna remove everything out, the timeline, all that stuff.
That's, that's what I addressed in my letter.
Okay.
So pertaining to those comments, um, we filed a site plan with the application. We also filed a utility plan. The site plan is not changing at all. The only thing that's happening is all of the car parts and the car stuff is all moving off.
Yeah.
Majority of the operation will be inside of the building. Um, they may take some of the stairs that they put together and put them out on the lot to be picked up by, and be distributed.
Okay.
Comment number two, um, we addressed with the fact that that lot will be cleared by April 1st.
Okay.
Um, and then comment number three pertaining to the barbed wire. If you look at the surrounding properties there, um, the food bank has barbed wire. Um, the other, I had the other, and I submitted pictures of the barbed wire.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, I saw the pictures, yeah.
Um, so we would think that that's a little extreme. Um, barbed wire is used for safety reasons. Um, we're not changing anything pertaining to the building or the site, except cleaning it up.
Okay.
Changing the use.
All right. Well, I don't know if we need to put those as conditions. I mean, I'll listen to what everybody else says, but I would agree with the barbed wire if everybody, you know, the surrounding area, they're all, no, no, that they're using it. So, and I understand, I understand where, you know, planning, project management team's getting with, with, with the guys of the wildlife, but the purpose of the barbed wire is kind of to keep the wildlife away.
Do you want copies of the pictures I submitted?
Uh, do you have extra copies, just so we can have for the record?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Uh, well, okay, Dylan, I mean, Peter, you already have them, or no?
No, there's another set here. So, these are the way they, they are printed. Food Bank, and then this one is, um, the next is 9 Baldwin.
Okay.
So they all have our wire.
And that's the one you emailed out today, right, Counselor? Yeah, okay, yep, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, actually, those are in the, uh, those are in the, we got those.
Yeah.
Okay. So, then, again, I don't see any need for the, I just pointed that out in the comments, but you addressed them, and I don't think we need to condition them at all, and, um, go from there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Um, I think it's good, um, reusage of the site. Um, I don't have any issues. Um, I hope they do expand and hire some more people, and best of luck. I'll vote in favor of this.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Havi. Um, you know, I, I think it's a very well thought-out, um, plan, and I understand why you're moving to, to Lowell, especially hearing everything. Um, yeah, I, I don't have any concerns. Um, thank you for coming to Lowell. I know you probably could have picked a lot of, a couple of different areas and communities, so. Um, and again, the site, I think it's gonna be, uh, less intrusive now in terms of the, the usage, the proposed usage, so I'd be supporting as well. So, um, if we have no comments.
Just to clarify, your client is already from Lowell. He's the owner of the property. He's leasing it out to somebody who's coming to Lowell.
Yes, very, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, he's already an established business in Lowell.
Yes, he's been here for 50 years.
Yeah, so. I think there was some confusion by other, by the other board members, thinking that you were coming to, you were coming into town.
Emerald is coming.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Callahan. All right, if there's no further comments, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2025-2 for a special permit for 9 Baldwin Street to approve a special permit to convert an existing non-conforming use, um, as a automotive salvage yard to a metal fabrication company.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy. Second one, the vice chairman. Um, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Procop.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right, you've been approved. Wish you best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Nice night.
Have a good evening. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have ZBA-2025-3 petition of variance. The applicant is Asera Suero, um, property located at 55, uh, Williamset Street. Um, the petition, the Lowell zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an obligation by the applicant to open a tax and immigration specialist business, uh, at 55 Williamset Street. The subject property is located in the neighborhood business NB zoning district. The project requires variance approval for Section 6.1 for relief from the minimum parking requirements and for any relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Yeah, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
You wanted to tell us about your project and anything you want to share tonight?
Sure. Uh, the name of my business is Ola Multi Services. I'm an attorney. I'm a justice of the peace. We also do taxes and also immigration, and so far, the population has been increased, and I'm here to see if I'm able to stay at that place and get the approval for the zoning.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Anything else you want to share, ma'am?
Well, um, I've been helping the community, not only, um, English speakers, but also Spanish and Portuguese as well.
That's great. Thank, thank you, thank you. Um, if we have nothing further, we're just opening the hearing to the public. Um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition with this petition? In opposition, in opposition. Seeing that portion of public hearings closed, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor. Hearing that the public hearings close, we're gonna open questions or comments from the board. Uh, the chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The staff had no concerns with granting the parking relief. I have no concerns either. I'll be, I'll be in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Brier. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to ask, where is the, um, front door of the, uh, facility that's gonna be used for the taxes?
The front door goes, is facing the set of lights right at the corner, um, which is one street, and then on the right corner, we have Abbott Street, which is one-way street.
The, the building has a number of entrances, it seems. It's got a couple on Abbott and one on?
Yes, those are emergency doors.
Okay.
Now, yeah, one is facing, one is street on the side on the, if you're facing this way, is on the left side, and then we have another one on the right side on the back of it.
How many businesses are in the building already?
It's only one.
And, and, okay, and what is the business that's currently there?
The name of the business?
What is the business that's currently there?
What do you mean?
Okay, there's only one business in the building right now.
Yes, it's only one business space.
And are you expanding your business to include taxes?
Oh, well, we have a waiting area we needed to separate it because it used to be a laundromat before.
Right.
And it was a wide-open space, was just one. So we divided it to have the waiting area, and then we have two doors, um, for the employees and the, uh, customers, and then you come to the second space to my office. That's how it's divided. And then we have the door that was already in the back from the laundry, so we left it there the way it is, and those are two emergencies, also doors in the back, that is directed to Abbott Street and Wamis Street.
Is, is the laundromat currently existing?
No, it's not.
Right. And so what is the business that currently existing in the, in the building? Is there anything going on in the building right now as a business?
Yes, my business, Ola Multi Services.
And your services seem to have a lot of different things. You mentioned immigration, but also now you're gonna include taxes?
It was already included.
This was, I talked to the building commissioner recently. It's legalizing the business, like, retroactively.
Oh.
I didn't realize this. And I was out sick last week, and then I didn't realize this.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry for the confusion.
Okay. So, okay, so, so the business is there, and we're
It's already there, yes.
... variance for an existing business.
It's just that I started from back to front. I did the permission.
Got it.
Yeah, I didn't do this part because I didn't have knowledge by that time. It was my first time opening a business.
And I imagine this is less impactful than the laundromat ever was.
Oh, yeah.
Right? Okay. Um, and it did have, uh, no substantial negative comments at all from staff?
No, not at all. Yes.
I think I can support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Uh, the chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, um, this makes sense. I mean, I used to reside in the neighborhood, and I'm familiar. I've gone through that intersection numerous times, and also in the past, gone to the establishment across the street when that was in existence, uh, some time ago. Um, but, uh, there's no parking over there. It's a very restricted neighborhood.
Yes.
Especially Abbott Street and Wamis Street itself.
Yes.
Um, it amazes me, like, some of the houses on Wamis Street, if people, they have off-street parking. I think there's a garage there, too, how they get, even get their car in and out of that garage on that street. So, um, and to Dennis's point, I was gonna bring up the same thing. I remember the laundromat there being there.
Yeah.
Um, and, yeah, that, the laund, the laundromat probably would have more impact, be more impactful as far as parking is concerned and people coming in and coming out. Um, so your business doesn't seem like it's gonna be mostly, no.
No.
Appointment by appointment for traffic stuff, stuff of that effect, so, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I, I could, I can be an improvement of this, so.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Mr. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Um, good luck. I don't have any questions.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Havi. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Procop. Mr. Procop, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I don't have any questions either. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Um, I don't really have any comments. I, I know this is a, a good kind of repurpose of the building, and, um, wish you the best of luck. So, you know, it's,
Thank you.
I'm sure, you know, hopefully you succeed. It's, uh, so.
Yes.
Um, any other comments before we make a motion? Seeing that can, oh, Mr. McCarthy, yes, sir?
I, I just wanted to make sure you understood. I, thank you very much for doing this kind of business in the city. I'm sure that it is welcomed by the community that you're serving.
Yes.
And I, I wanna thank you for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. All right, if there's no further comments, can we have a motion?
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2025-3 for variance at 55 Wamis Street, um, to provide, um, uh, relief from minimum parking requirements and any of the relief required.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second one, Mr. Procop. Um, can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Proco.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Havi.
Approve.
All right, you've been approved, ma'am. Wish you best of luck.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good luck. It's tax season, so best of luck on everything.
I might be using it.
All right, um, moving on, we're gonna go back to continued business, um, on the docket here in the agenda. Um, we have ZBA-2024-49. The petition is a variance. The applicant is Alexa Furman, um, property located at 451 Broadway Street. Um, the petition, the Lowell zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing until interested persons relative to an application by Alexa Furman to open an event space at 451 Broadway Street. The property is located in the UMU zoning district and requires special permit under Article 12.3G for the proposed use, a variance under Section 6.1.4.3G for relief from off-street parking requirements and any other relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Do you want to just tell us, um, any updates about your project and the application you put in?
Yes, the last time they said that I needed to provide the, um, operating hours. So, um, what we're trying to do is like, um, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, or depending the event that we're gonna have, is sort of a educational, like, for classes. Sometimes in the beauty industry, we need to teach, we teach, you know, students, uh-huh, and also, um, I also been having people approaching me, asking me for church events, um, business events, and, yeah, that's, that's the main point about the meeting room.
Okay, that's great.
We're not gonna have any kitchen. It's just like catering, um, the drinks, not alcoholic drinks, until if I can apply for a license and I get approved for it, then we, you know, and also, um, yeah, we just, I, I don't wanna, like, be an inconvenient in the neighborhood.
Of course.
I just want to provide a space, you know, so people can have events there.
Of course. Thank, thank you, ma'am, for that. Um, did you want to talk about parking at all? You wanna?
Oh, yes, the parking. I have, like, five spots, three drive-in, and then two in the back, and then the street, it's free parking.
Of course, yeah. Okay. All right, um, if we have no further comments, we'll open the hearing to the public, okay?
Okay.
Um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition with this petition? In opposition, in opposition. Seeing that portion of public hearings closed, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor. Seeing that the public hearings closed, we're gonna open question the comments from the board. Uh, the chair recognizes, um, Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, three, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Unfortunately, they're about parking. Um, so, uh, the building department suggested that the limit of people that you could have at an event would be 49, um, because of the layer of the space, maybe. Um, how many people do you have in your mind as far as the limit that you would place on an event?
Probably like 20, 'cause the courses, they don't fill in, you know, like, it's few students and like that, yeah.
And these people would be carpooling or walking from the community or all driving? And these people would be carpooling or walking from the community or all driving?
Uber. It depends, you know? It depends the type of students.
Right. And you're really only providing maybe three spaces?
Five.
But I imagine one or two of them are probably staff that are gonna be providing the teaching or the training?
But it's from, like, us, like, let's say us. We are gonna be providing the classes, me and my team.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yes. And, like I mentioned, the street, it's... there's plenty of parking on the streets. I tried to, you know, get an agreement with one of my neighbors, but they didn't want it to, and then several months ago, I tried to reach... there's a land across the street. I tried to contact the owners, even with my realtor, and we send them letters and nothing. We make phone calls and no answer.
I... when this kind of thing comes before the board in the past, I would always suggest administrative review, maybe in six months, to see if the parking is creating any negative effects for the surrounding community, and if you need to come up with another solution for the parking. So, that would be a condition. I'd like to see a support, that we have a six-month administrative review to understand if the solution for parking is fine that you have, or if we need to come up with something else.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for providing us with the updated information, including the application, I think, because we mentioned before that the real owner of the property is your LLC, and you put down later it was you, but it's not a big deal. It's just... we just want to make sure that every... all the ducks are lined up in a row, and we know what we're dealing with here. And thank you for providing the new narrative of your operation and what you plan on doing along with the hours of operation. I think you mentioned proposed hours of operation from 10:00 to 10:00, but I thought the... what you provided said 10:00 to 11:00. Is that... is this... you're just trying to be flexible about that?
Actually, yes, I have 10:00 to 11:00 here.
Yeah, so, is it 10:00 to 10:00 or 10:00 to 11:00?
10:00 to 11:00, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I think you just mentioned, you said it was 10:00 to 10:00.
Yeah. I got confused.
I would probably have no... still have no problem with that, I mean... And getting a better understanding of what your proposed plans of operation are. I think the concern from the board, the last time, you did mention the possibility of you seeking a, you know, alcohol license or whatever at one point, and I think that probably raised some concerns about it turning into a club or, like, a bar or a club or something to that effect. And I think that's why we wanted a little more clarification from you on this, but it sounds to me it's gonna be mostly trainings, meetings, and stuff like that for church organizations and other stuff. And you mentioned that your... you and your staff would be conducting most of those trainings, right?
Yes.
So, okay. I... but I have a... yeah, I have no really concerns about that, so I think I can approve this, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Havi. Ms. Havi, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I have the same concerns as I did last time. You did mention that you were gonna try to get a liquor license again, correct?
That is in the future. It's an idea. It's not right now. Right now, it's mostly, like, in our industry, what I'm trying to...
Right. I can appreciate that. I don't have a problem with the teaching or the church aspect or the meeting aspect of this. It's that event aspect. I know it's kind of threading a needle between meeting and event, but if we're talking about a place that stays open till 11:00, that's serving alcohol, that can fit 49 people, and I'll be kind and say that's people carpool, and you have 25 cars, well, if you have staff and three... five total parking spots, but three additional parking spots, you're asking 20 cars to go onto the street, which, there's plenty of parking during the day, but when people are home, it's right next to an apartment complex, and now we're gonna start to have some parking issues, so... I don't have a concern with the daytime operations. It's that event part with alcohol being served. You know, whether it's a family reunion or a get-together, Jack and Jill, or whatever it is, that brings in a crowd, and that's when the parking becomes an issue. So, those are my concerns. You know, the teaching aspect and the church aspect and the meeting portion of it, I don't mind, but I really have an issue with parking and the events at night, so...
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
It's all the opposite. During the daytime, it's when the streets are busy. In the nighttime, it's... because all the properties around the area, they have their own parking. There's, like, no cars on the street at night.
We're still asking for 20 parking spots onto the street.
Yeah, but I just wanted to clarify that during the day, it's when the streets are busier, because there's a couple of businesses around, you know, around me... well, two businesses, a gas station, and then there's a grocery store at the corner. But other than that, all the properties around the area, they have their own parking.
Certainly. And, again, during the day, other businesses are parked there. At night, if we're having events, like you just said, those are residents that live around a property that's now holding events at night till 11:00 o'clock, alcohol, so that's where my concern is.
Yes, the space that I want to use, it's, like, in the first floor, so... because that property, the way they built it, it's kind of weird. They put up a wall, and then the wall, like, it had to do stairs because they were using, like, an elevator for the first floor, so it's, like, almost in the ground. It's not even, like... And then the second floor, you have to use a stair, so the property is kind of... I don't know if you've seen it. It's kind of, you know? Yeah, so, in there, like, it doesn't, you know, make... there's no way that there will be noises outside. I don't know if you've seen the property. It's kind of weird.
Yeah, yeah, I grew up in the area. I've seen the property, but there's no way you can say there's... if you're having an event at night, I'm gonna guess there's gonna be a DJ at the event. It's not gonna be a bunch of people sitting around just talking, right? So, there's gonna be noise from that, and then when people are leaving at 11:00 o'clock at night after having a few drinks, then there's gonna be noise from that. It's just people, alcohol, in nighttime means noise. I mean, there's no way around it, regardless of what you do. I mean, that's gonna happen, but I'll certainly listen to what everybody else has to say.
Thank you, Mr. Havi. The chair recognizes Mr. Procop. Mr. Proco, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a problem with the idea, but to everyone else's concern about the potential of getting, you say, a liquor license? It's something... I know it's something you're planning...
Something that I probably, I won't even do it.
Right.
You know, if I would be having the events and I will be keeping my place busy, you know, money-wise, then I won't... I won't even deal with that, yeah.
Right, but if we approve you, you could probably apply for a liquor license. But my question is, if you get a liquor license, what would you be doing? Is that for you to have the ability to rent the space so that if somebody has a party or something of that nature?
Exactly, but we will control... we will be our own.
But you'd be on the premises to control, to ensure that the policies are adhered to?
Yeah, that's why I won't have a staff. Like, they do their own... they bring their own food, and then we just control the drinking.
Okay, understood. You also mentioned the property across the street that you've tried to reach several times. Is that your intent to purchase that property?
Yes.
So that you can provide parking for other events?
Mm-hmm. I asked at the planning and zoning, but they said that they didn't have information of them.
Okay.
My realtor searched, and then he called them a couple of times, sent a letter to their house, and no answer. So, we don't even know who is the owner.
But your intent is...
Yes.
For this particular property, that if you have the ability to provide additional parking by acquiring this parcel of land, is that what you would provide?
Yes.
Again, I think it's a grand idea. I commend you for, you know, for, you know, trying to provide these additional services in the neighborhood, but this is also where I agree with Member McCarthy, that maybe six months down the road, that's what we called it, an administrative review. So, six months down the road after we approve you, we can revisit and see how it's impacting the neighborhood. So, I think that would be a good condition, and, you know, from my standpoint, I think it's a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proco. The chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be in voting, and I'll be voting in favor of this petition and agree that a six-month administrative review was appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I really think it's a nice idea, and, you know, you're providing a service to people in the neighborhood and in the community. Again, you know, I do have some similar concerns to my colleagues here, but again, I think as long as you're professional, responsible, and I think, we hope that you are, I don't think I see any concerns with, you know, hopefully... Because, you know, to me, I think, if you had another business and then you... and you just did this on, you know, underneath, on the download, it'd bring more problems, so you're trying to make it the right way, I think. So, I think that's the best approach. And again, also to my colleague's point, I think, in terms of parking and all that, a six-month review would be sufficient, and that way, if there's any problems with your neighbors or butters, that they can come and, you know, ask for any kind of relief or just any mitigation for any concerns. And again, there's no one in opposition here, so I think that's a good thing in your favor as well, so as long as you're a good, healthy neighbor and work with the community at large, you'd be good. And again, I think it's a great idea. Hopefully, you'd be successful. So, I'll be voting in favor with the condition that we talked about.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments from my colleagues? Mr. McCarthy, yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure my fellow colleagues understand the relief we're looking at is 11 parking spaces. You're providing... you're required to have 14 off-street. You're providing three, so we're saying the relief is 11 parking spaces, which I guess would be on-street at this point. So, that's what we'll be revisiting, the 11 parking space relief that we're providing tonight with the six-month administrative review.
Yeah. If there's no further comments, can we have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-49 for variance at 451 Broadway Street. We'll vote first on the variance. Peter? And then we'll have a second vote on the special permit, okay? So, for the variance for relief for off-street parking requirement.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
With the condition of a six-month administrative review.
Thank you.
Yeah, motion by Mr. McCarthy with the condition that we talked about.